I think we're ready to start.
Good morning. This is a special meeting, December 29th, to cover a number of items. First, I should mention, there were a number of items that were added on to the agenda without most people knowing that they would be there, including myself. Does anyone have a conflict at a certain point, other commitments that they might have to leave the meeting for? James and Ralph, you don't have court dates or any other pressing matters?
I need to leave by quarter to 12:00.
Okay. Okay. We'll keep that in mind in case we run out of time.
So, excuse me, is there more on the agenda than what's in here?
We have five items. But it was six, I'm sorry, six items. It's four more than I was expecting. So, start there. I guess normally, wouldn't the board chair be informed of the agenda before the meeting?
Yes.
It was sent within the, I mean, it wasn't finished until my third issue.
Okay.
So, the, let's see here. Let's talk about exactly what you were not expecting and make sure we're on the same page with that.
Okay.
So, which items did you not?
Well, the health plan and the other items beyond that were kind of a surprise.
The health plan, they give us, it was last Thursday, we sat down and walked through these and just determined, Medbin gives us a list of plan changes that need to occur prior to the start of the year. We walked through those. I sat down with Diane Nishel Brown in HR. We determined which ones we thought needed to be changed, and there were some that would affect the price of the plan and felt like that would have been a board decision. If we wait and, we could do this and table it, and you could do it next year, but then there's a notice period. You have to give employees through the Affordable Care Act, you have to give them notification, a 60-day waiting period. There's a lot of hoops to jump through.
Okay.
If we get this done before January 1st, we make the plan changes, we're off and running. So, that was one thought of trying to just be efficient.
Okay.
The other thing, the last two items, is we have two invoices. One of them came in at my desk on Wednesday, the Reed Smith invoice, and I have an E3 invoice that I've been debating on how to handle. So, I thought it'd be good to bring it to the board. We had this special meeting, so let's go ahead and just ask for approval of those.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we need to call the roll down.
Oh, good. Kathy, please note that all members are here. So, I think that that covers it. Okay. Thank you. First item, consider approval of WHAS retransmission consent agreement with Tenga Incorporated for carriage of WHAS 11 ABC Louisville on cable channel 11/511 through December 31st of 2020. Harvey, did you want to add some comments?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. I'm chairperson. Members of the board, staff recommends the approval of this retransmission consent agreement with Tegna for carriage of WHAS ABC out of Louisville through December 31st of 2020. Upon learning that FPB declined at our, at your December regular meeting to sign an agreement with Tegna, Tegna reached out to staff and offered a significant decrease on rates from their last offer. Staff felt the rates offered by Tegna made it impossible to not recommend executing this agreement. These new terms are significantly lower than what FPB pays Tegna for carriage of WHAS today and would have little to no effect on the retransmission surcharge proposed to be passed on to customers on March 1st, 2018. Later at this meeting, we intend to ask you to approve holding a public hearing regarding that surcharge to match the amount that we pay for the stations. Just a friendly reminder that the terms and conditions of this agreement are confidential, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment is that, just commending staff on the recommendation for the drop in the, those couple of stations last, in the last meeting, because, you know, clearly it worked out very much in our favor.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
I agree. You all have done a fine job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's unanimous.
So, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I agree that we approved the WHAS retransmission consent agreement with Tegna Inc. for carriage of WHAS, that's ABC Louisville, on cable channel 11/511 through December 31st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion pass. Okay. Action item number two, consider approving public hearing notice covering increased rates for retransmission surcharge, increased rates for bulk cable 1 and 2, and increased amounts for the multi-service discounts. Harvey, again.
Sure. Staff recommends the board approve the public notice for the purpose of conducting a public hearing at the regular meeting of the Frankfurt Plant Board on January 15th, 2018, at 5:00 PM at the Community Room in the FPB Administration Building. There are three items. The first would be to increase the rate for the retrans surcharge. This public notice proposes to increase the retransmission surcharge from $12.03 per month to $16.39 per month effective March 1st, 2018, from $16.39 to $18 effective January 1st, 2019, and from $18 to $19.98 per month effective January 1st, 2020. The increase is needed to keep pace with the increases in the retransmission consent fees FPB must pay to local broadcasters. These rates are a direct pass-through of the rates included in the retransmission consent agreement signed by FPB in December of 2017. The 2018 rate is prorated because FPB will begin paying the new rates on January 1st of 2018, but customers will not begin paying the new rates until March 1st of 2018. Secondly, the public notice proposes to increase the bulk cable 1 rate from $11.80 per outlet per month to $12.46 per outlet per month effective March 1st of 2018. Bulk cable 1 is defined as the FPB tariff includes hotels and KSU dormitories. The increase is needed to keep pace with the increases in retransmission consent fees. Staff proposes to increase bulk cable 2 from $20.50 per outlet per month to $21.73 per outlet per month effective March 1st, 2018. Bulk cable 2 is defined in the tariff typically includes office complexes with more than eight outlets. And those are, those increases match exactly the percentage increase that goes in lockstep with the retrans increase. So, it's, we just pay essentially a percentage of what the full retail rate is, is what we charge for bulk. And then finally, increase the amounts on multiple service discounts effective March 1st, 2018. These are discounts for customers that have high-speed internet and phone and/or television service. If you have two of those services, your discount would increase from $3 per month to $6 per month. If you have all three of those services, the discount would increase from $6 per month to $12 per month. These discounts have been in place since 2005 when the internet offerings consisted of 128K, 256K, and 512K, and have never been adjusted because of the continuing increasing cost of cable TV. Staff feels increasing the discounts to customers who use the most FPB cable telecom services will help retain our most valuable customers. The increased discounts are included in this year's budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this.
I just have a comment. I think it's great that you're increasing the amount for people that have more services because that really makes up for the increase in the cable transmission charges. So, it makes it a little less painful for those people. So, that's great.
That was the strategy.
Harvey, I know we talked about the discounts for multiple services in the agenda meeting. Did we discuss it in the last board meeting, or I don't think we did come up? So, this is the first time?
Right. Yeah, just for this establishing the public hearing that we would hold in January, the regular meeting, and then if approved, you would potentially approve it in the February meeting and go into effect on March 1st, along with the retrans.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got this in our budget. In the narrative section, we talk about January 1st, that we look to modify the multi-service discount, and we also have it budgeted in our budget as well. You can see the increase there, and so this was a planned thought. We talked about really trying hard to keep our debt load down, and this is assumed that we would increase, have the drawdown on our third lien lease for $9 million total, and there are no other debt issuances planned for telecom. If we were to have a next-generation broadband rollout, you know, we have looked at approaching that with a cash-only payment plan, as we make and generate the funds that we would invest in the system. So, if the board makes a decision to take out a debt issuance for a large broadband project, you know, this budget completely changes and all of our assumptions change and rates change and all that. So, this is, multi-service discount increase is based on the budget as presented to the board and approved back in June.
So, like, as we talked about in the planning meeting, what changed to make us able to do this now? Is there some reason we couldn't have done this back in January or back in July or back a year ago? I mean, something changed about the dynamics of the organization to make it possible to do this now?
We paid off a DTA note that we took out. It was March of 2016, we paid it off. The debt payments, principal payments on that were $161,000 per quarter. So, that's $644,000 a year. We did not make any adjustments to rates after that loan was paid off. So, I think the increase from the current 3 to 6 and 6 to 12 would be approximately $400,000 a year. We do know we're continuing to lose customers in cable and TV, so those multi-service discounts are dropping off because people aren't subscribing to as many services. Hopefully, that will change if the board were to approve this. But that is one example of, and this continues, this is the perfect example of if you have no debt or if you retire debt, what you can do. This will be ability to extend some of that back to the customer.
I think the other, the idea on the timing, too, is to match the, what we anticipated in the increase on the retrans, to try to offset that as opposed to having those come at different times, just to make it a little bit more clear to the customer where the balance is.
Would you have been able to give the rate reduction back in April when we?
I don't think so. We've got a lot of unknowns. There's still discussion and question as to how to roll out a new broadband system. I know, I think there's some discussion about, you know, going full bore and as quick as you can. I'm taking the conservative approach, is the way I would like to go at it, is cash-only, invest in the system as you can generate cash to pay. So, until we get that settled, we got past the report. I think, like I say, if the board has any inclination that they want to go out and borrow more money, then we might need to reconsider this. But the way the budget was presented and passed, this was something that we would like to do and think we can do, trying to retain those customers, reward them for their loyalty and the fact they take two or three services from them. If we were to go out and do additional debt for, you know, a large project, we might need to revisit, you just look at everything different. We don't have any plans for broadband rate increases in this five-year plan. So, you know, we reevaluate the budget each year. We put out a five-year plan to help with capital infrastructure, improve its debt/cash management, but we come back every year and refresh it based on what we know and situations that change. So, we've got it in there, and we think we'd like to go ahead and see if the board would consider approving that.
Approximately, how many customers do we have that have all three services?
I've got that information, and I'd be glad to, you know, we'll give more in-depth information at the.
I've got that.
Got that in front?
This is from a few months ago, but we have just short of 5,500 double-play customers, that get the two-pay discount, and we have just over 3,000 of the three-pay. But then, it's also important to note that those numbers have been declining as we've lost video subscribers over the years. They peaked several years ago, and so those are, those are on the downturn, the number of those discounts that we give.
And I guess also, what's, and then we have, what, 14,000 or 17,000 broadband customers?
At the moment, this snapshot, it was just south of 15,000, so 14,000 and change.
You look at total customers that have at least one service, you're getting at about 17,000.
Yeah. So, then, I guess, so, is there anything, I guess, when I look at this, that this discount applies towards, you know, the most affluent of our customer base, it kind of looks like?
I wouldn't say affluent, it's the right.
Or at least, I guess, the highest building rates, however you want to look at that.
Right. Those that choose to take those services.
Those that have the most services. I mean, is there anything else we should consider with this money that maybe has a more even retention effect across the whole customer base? Because this is only going to cover about a third of our customers. Is there anything we should think about for the other third?
One of the big things that, you know, we want to keep rates down on all lines of service. I think what we've proposed in our budget for this current year and looking forward, we've done that. You know, I have started to kind of get a little feel for the KYMEA indicative rates that are, you know, it's an indicator, it's not the final, but, you know, we only budgeted $4 million of savings, and it's definitely going to be higher than that. So, we're already making changes and planning forward to reduce or be able to possibly hold rate steady for a period of time. So, that's helping electric customers. On our water side, we've really worked to, we're paying down debt on debt issuance today. The reservoir has been something we've known for a decade, and it needs to be fixed. It is a safety issue. We have to pay for it, and we have to get it done. But looking forward at water, we're really working to stay within our means and keep rates low there. Cable telecom, you know, the industry's shifting rapidly. One of our discussions about keeping and paying for broadband with cash is to have that flexibility that, you know, most of our customers today subscribe to a lower 10-mag service, and I think we're making steps. What we've talked about in the pre-agenda meeting with this as well is, we've had some providers that will, you know, people call in unhappy, want to disconnect cable, and they'll get one-off promotions that, hey, we'll give it to you for three months, and the next customer calls in next week and say, hey, we'll give you this many channels for the next month. And what we're taking here is an approach across all customers that subscribe to these services to make it a, it's pretty fair, it's transparent, it's clean. When you're sitting talking to your neighbor over dinner, you don't figure out that you have two different rates for your cable service. So, we're taking a broad approach to this and rewarding those that buy our service. I'd be, we'd be happy for any other, if you have any ideas, we'd be.
I guess I was asking you, I mean, all for giving, you know, whatever money we can give back to our customers, we absolutely should.
Sure.
But, you know, it looks like this addresses about 30% of our customer base, and I'd like to hear some thoughts about, you know, how we, you know, extend, you know, that windfall to the other, you know, 60% of our customer base that are, that fewer elective services and less premium products from us.
I would say those numbers are, because it's about 8,500 that have some multiple service out of the 14,000, so it's more like 60% that would be affected as opposed to the 30. But I think just sort of being in a competitive business, the idea of encouraging folks to take more than just one line of service, and the way that folks are looking at internet as a utility more, where that's sort of the baseline, that everybody's getting the internet, and so this would be encouraging the folks that are, you know, wanting to add-on services. So, you know, we're not, we're certainly willing to, you know, discuss any other options, but this is, you know, this is how we talked about it in the budget process, and this is where we are today.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I think this is great, but, you know, for the, I guess I'd like staff to put their heads together and think about how we could, you know, have something that addresses all the, all the rate payers and not just, not just a small group.
Do you have any ideas of how you'd like to?
I'd have to, off the cuff, no. Same thing, I think, maybe we put our heads together and think about, you know, what we might be able to do to help the entire rate base instead of just a portion.
Well, maybe looking at that amount of money that, since we aren't paying that debt anymore, that we stopped paying in March 2016?
Yes.
If we gave an overall cost decrease, like 10% off or something like that? I don't know.
I think, to Harvey's point, it's a very good one, that.
Or maybe there's a balance between retention and overall rate reduction, and some of it goes towards retention and some of it goes towards overall rate reduction.
Because we need to keep the customers to be able.
Right. Yeah, I agree with the retention part, but I think we also need to think about the whole customer base and make sure that we're, you know, because those customers, all these years, all of them have been paying towards that debt, seems like they all ought to benefit once that's, once that's off the table.
Okay. Well, this is our approach.
Yeah.
So, we're throwing it out today. We'd be glad to go back and look at anything else, but, you know, we've looked at this, and this was an approved budget, and this is the way we'd like to move forward. So, be glad to see how, if you want to have the hearing, I'll be, you know, regarding this issue. If not, then we'll.
But isn't everyone that is receiving cable is then getting two services because they're getting electric and they're getting cable?
This is only for cable, multiple services and cable telecom, so it would be internet plus television, or internet plus phone, or all three.
Okay.
So, it's just in the cable telecom.
So, the hinge there is broadband. You have that broadband.
That's where the discount lives.
Which is our growing, our one growing product line.
Right. And I guess, in the bigger picture, what we just went for was changing our ad insertion method and possibly having an increase in income in that area?
Yes, we're trying to keep up with rising costs. So, yeah, that's.
So, you think, see that as a break-even type thing?
I don't think that that, I'd like to sit back and see how it works out. We've given you the assumptions. We think we're going to have about $30,000 a year increase in net assets above what we do today because of that, but I would definitely, as we do with everything, is reevaluate year to year. We have a five-year deal with Biomedia, but I really think, as you saw from the information we presented with all the unsold ad inventory out there, that there's significant ability to raise revenue. This is just our, what we think is a good approach to retain customers. If you look at our customer counts, you know, we have them in the board pack of each month. Broadband is the, is the one growing line. The rest are either stabilized or we're losing customers in cable. So, we want to keep those customers.
Yeah. But I guess my suggestion would be we approve it with a stipulation on three, that, you know, staff puts their heads together between now and the meeting, and we try to find a way that we can address the entire customer base and give back to all of them, and also have the retention component in there.
Okay.
How does that fit into having the hearing? Do we have to have a specific thing that the hearing?
Is for, yeah, I mean, I think, I would defer to legal, but I would think that you're establishing, the hearing is for that specific item, whether it's a discount or an increase.
So, we have until the notice of the hearing to?
To adjust that.
Notice has to be specific, doesn't it?
Yeah, the notice has, but, but I said, what's the timing on the notice? How long do we have before we have to give notice?
The notice has to be advertised between not, less than seven days and not more than 21 days prior to the hearing. So, we've got to turn this around pretty quick to get it into the 16th.
And we're asking for this to be at the regular January board meeting.
Yeah, January 16th meeting, so, very soon.
Yeah.
And you're seeking public comment on a specific plan, so you have to notify the public of what that plan is or proposed plan?
Would it be easy just to, you could still, you could vote on this at the public hearing of what staff has presented, and yes, absolutely go forward with thoughts on, and then bring that back. You have this specific item now, now to consider. Of course, go ahead with, you know, how can we vet the entire rate base?
Yeah.
But maybe have that at a later, you know, at a later time. You can go ahead and vote on this specific thing.
Well, but if we do the, if we include number three, would that, would the money be available to apply to the rest of the rate base? Should we give it all to retention?
Well, you're not approving this, you're just approving the public hearing, so the actual approval of the item wouldn't be until February. You're just asking for public comment, so there's, I think what Hank says, there would still be time to consider something.
A decision to go a different direction, just deciding to not approve this, and then we would go in a different direction after that.
If, after the public hearing, when we bring it to you in February, if you don't want to do number three, we just, you just dump out on it, and we do something else.
Oh, okay.
And since that's, and since that's a regular meeting, you know, staff could bring us other ideas for that one at that meeting, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that works.
But the public hearing portion would be specifically on those three items.
Yes.
So, would that mean that we'd have to have another special, another public hearing for?
If we were to do something different.
For the different?
Yes, if you have to.
Because the tariff mentions rate changes of any kind, either whether it's.
Right.
Increase or decrease.
Somewhere.
Decrease is a good, good option.
Yeah. I don't know. What does everybody think?
I don't have a problem with what they've done, so.
Well, I think from the standpoint of, it is a good idea, but if we change your mind and came up with something else, if we've already given it away, then we can't get it back, so it limits future options.
I just think by having the decrease, it offsets the increase, and so it makes people feel like, well, I really didn't get an increase because I got the decrease in, you know, in the multiple services. So, it makes the retrans increase easier for people to deal with.
True, but looking at the numbers, there are 15,000 roughly customers, and about maybe 8,000, possibly 9,000 would benefit from this. So, only half of those customers are going to see the benefit.
And it's likely the, you know, the folks in that, in that out, in that, the one we benefit from it might need it more than others, given that they're going to have limited services or maybe a little more financially restricted, so.
You might have some that say, hey, hey, the discount's 12 bucks if I, or six if I add, if I bring back cable TV to my lineup, instead of having this broadband, I get $6 off. It might encourage people to come back to those services, too. So, that's, this is, we are in a competitive business.
Yeah, understand.
And so, we are looking to stay competitive. We're looking to encourage people. This is a promotion to encourage people to take more than one line of business.
Well, possibly, we'd have comments at the hearing of people that may or may not feel strongly about it.
But we feel good about it. We, like I said, this was in the budget that the board approved, and we've got the narrative, and we've got the financial backing here to show we can support it, so.
Do we have a motion for having the hearing?
I move that we hold a public hearing notice covering increased rate for retransmission surcharge, increasing rate for bulk cable 1 and 2, and increasing amounts for multi-service discounts.
I second. Okay. So, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, motion, pass unanimously. Okay, number three, consider changes to the FPB employee.
I'm sorry, I probably should have mentioned, but the public hearing proposed to be January 15th, 2018.
It has to be 16th, is the best rate.
Okay, 16th, okay.
Oh, thank you.
They're closed on the 15th. I don't imagine anybody wants to.
Okay. Item number three, action item, consider changes to the FPB employee health plan effective January 1st, 2018. And Angie Hart will cover this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that you had some questions on this, but basically, staff needs direction on four out of the 12.
Okay.
So, I can go over the four out of the 12 that we need direction on, and then if you have questions on the rest, we can go after that.
Sounds good. Now, did these four come up recently, or?
Well, actually, after consultant with Cheryl Dean Morgan, the 12 items was recommended that we made provisions or, it's basically, it's cost savings, administration, and compliance by law on the 12.
Okay.
So, I can go through the first four that we need direction on, and if you have questions on the others.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. On page 19, staff recommends to change the language on legal guardianship to remove the title distinction between the child's estate and person. Cheryl Dean Morgan recommends us to modify the language due to administration. It's too hard to distinguish a child's estate versus the person, so they had recommended that change. So, we need direction on that change.
Do we need to make motions individually or just in total? Or does it need a motion?
We can go through all four, and if everybody feels good about them, put them all together or take them one by one from the start. It's however you think. We think they're pretty straightforward.
We'd have to take them. James, wouldn't we have to take them all at once, since it, there's only a single agenda item? This is a special meeting?
It's all contained within that item. What Mr. Denton made sense, made sense, just to go through them all and ask questions as the board sees fit, and we take a vote.
Good. Then, continue, Angie.
Okay.
The one you just read, that's strictly administrative, I mean, that's just an administrative.
Yeah, that's, shouldn't be a problem. Because it's too hard to distinguish between the two.
Sure.
Because in the court order, a lot of times they don't define estate for child. On page twenty, we recommend to modify. It's common practice for the contraceptives to be done in an office environment. A member can go to the pharmacist to receive the devices, but ultimately they have to go to the, to the physician's office, so we recommend changing it to the office.
So the amendment suggests that you consider covering these devices and implants through the medical benefits regardless if they are available through a pharmacy benefit?
Because currently they're available through the pharmacist, but then the member has to go to the physician's office.
So if it's covered through the medical plan, they can just, everything's taken care of right there in the office?
Thank you for helping me with that.
Okay.
Cheryl Morgan is recommending these, is that right?
Yes, and it's, it's common practice.
Yeah, okay.
Because in, at the physician's office, they have everything there and the members don't have to go to the pharmacist to pick up the device and then go to the physician's office. It's all done right there in the office environment.
And there's none that, that they would just get from the pharmacist and wouldn't require an office visit?
Yeah, a lot of time that you can't even get it at the pharmacist.
But there, but it's a true statement that I made that there, there's none that they would get from the pharmacist that wouldn't require an office visit?
Right, correct, yes. Yes, you're going to have to have an office visit.
So ultimately, this is, it turns it from two stops into one stop?
Yes.
Yes.
And then on page twenty-six, which is statins, these are statin drugs, which is cholesterol medication. Staff recommends to pay a hundred percent on the generic. The cost difference after comparing last year's was one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. After looking through the data, it looked like one individual had brand. If you look at the bullet points, if anyone falls within that criteria, we have to pay a hundred percent on, on that member if they fall within that criteria. The pharmacist cannot distinguish whether someone meets that criteria. So administratively, it would be easier to pay generic at a hundred percent. However, after talking to the pharmacist yesterday, they can modify it to where they have to have a preauthorization and have to wait one to three days. So they can administer it that way, but the cost difference, because the total cost for brand and generic was five thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars, so the difference was one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for the year. So majority of the members are doing the generic anyway. So it kind of looked like one person was doing brand.
But doesn't it specify that if the doctor determines they need the brand, then that would be approved?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
So today it's eighty percent that we, well, depending on what plan you have.
Depending on which plan that, yes.
If you have a high deductible health plan, a hundred percent's covered. Today it's eighty under the PPO plan. This would move it to a hundred percent for everyone. Due to the fact that the U.S. Preventive Services Task Force upgraded statins to preventive medicines from a C to a B recommendation, so this is whether we want to absorb, last year, just using last year as an example, employees paid fifteen, one thousand five hundred and twenty. So if you can use last year as a, as a marker that we're saying that we would be eating a fifteen hundred dollars, so that everyone would be paid a hundred percent for statins if you met those criteria, of forty-five to, forty to seventy-five years old, you have one or more CVD risk factors and that you've got a ten-year risk of cardiovascular event, a ten percent or greater. So it's really because this was going to bring cost onto the plan, wanted the board to give us direction on that.
And so the total impact is, is twenty percent of the five or is it the whole five?
If you're going a hundred percent, it would be a hundred for all, so it would be fifteen hundred and twenty dollars is what last year was. It might increase it a little bit if, depending on how our.
Depending on members, if they have to take.
But it's hundreds of dollars, right?
Yes, fifteen hundred.
Right. Oh, I mean, the potential increase is what I was asking.
Correct, yes, right, right. You're talking about, yes, tens of dollars per employee per month possibly, but it's, I feel comfortable that it's not going to get, it wouldn't get out of hand unless everybody's popping like statins like candy. And then, see, we have one more. I think that was.
No, that was the first.
Those are the four that, the other ones were either required by law, ACA or Kentucky law, and so they were pretty straightforward. There might be one worth mentioning.
I only have three, guardianship.
Contraceptives.
Number four.
Yes.
Because we're on implants.
We skipped implants.
Implants for hearing.
Sorry.
Hearing implant.
So is that something new, implants for hearing or?
I'm sorry.
Implants for hearing, is that a new item?
Well, we currently cover cochlear implants, okay? So it has been recommended to us to also cover anchored hirionade, which is anchored to the bone. So staff didn't want to make a recommendation until we found out what the cost difference was. So currently, for the cochlear implants, it's about forty thousand dollars. So if a member had to have cochlear implants, it'd be forty thousand dollars and our plan currently covers that. We are recommending to add the anchored hirionade and the cost is between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars, so it's half the, the cost of the cochlear. So our recommendation would be to add that coverage.
Okay.
So this, this is a least costly procedure?
It's actually, you know, cheaper than the cochlear, so.
I guess the doctor would recommend one or the other, is it?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
So it's a, won't lose but might come out ahead on.
Yes, and it's actually anchored to the, to the bone on the back of the hand. So some, some members may prefer that or their doctor prefer it, so. And it, the cost is actually cheap. So as far as the cost savings, and those were the four items. And then if I can go over any of the other items that you might have questions on. So we need direction on how to proceed with those.
So the leading guardianship, we want to take out that one underlined mention between the state and the.
Person.
Yep, and then the contraceptive, the implants and the statins.
Okay, so unless somebody has some concerns about any one, I would just say we treat them all together.
Sounds good to me.
Make a motion, we accept the changes for the FPB employee health plan effective January first, twenty eighteen.
Hold second. Second, okay, Don's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion pass. Okay, number four, consider approving minutes from the December eighteenth, twenty seventeen board meeting. Now, the minutes just came out yesterday. I had a chance to read them and had some comments, suggested changes. Did anyone else have a chance to read them? I'm wondering if we should.
I haven't had a chance to read them yet.
Okay.
I'll read them.
Ralph, did you have a chance?
I wasn't in the meeting, I was sick.
Okay, true.
So I'll go with my board members.
Okay. I feel perhaps it would be wise to have everyone take a look at those before we vote and approve them. And also along on, on meeting minutes, the cable advisory committee met and are there meeting minutes that we should be?
I, I was planning to include those in the January regular meeting for y'all, for your review.
Okay, good, that's good to know. So I, I suggest that we move approving the December meeting and it's to January and we all have those to look over.
I second.
Okay. I guess I didn't say it like a motion, but I guess I did. I, I moved that we delay that until the January meeting and Ralph seconded.
Is that what we should be doing here, James, or should we just not act on this one?
You could accomplish the same thing either way, I think, but you now have a motion and second.
Right, and it's clear, so.
That would proceed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carry. Number five, consider approving Reed Smith invoice two nine, I'm sorry, two nine eight two eight one one dated November thirtieth, twenty seventeen for the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred and twelve for legal, legal review of the Kentucky Municipal Energy Agency. Okay, now, there's a procurement code, which I believe we've been following. James, did you have a comment on that?
I understand the staff's concern about this, but I don't think it's a problem. This was a project initiated by the board, so it's a little bit different from RFPs that we've had in the past, but it was specifically voted on and approved by the board. A procedure was used, which is very similar to what normally happens on an RFP. Qualified vendors were identified, the RFP was sent to them, numerous responses were received, they were scored using a very objective system. A preferred choice was established, that was presented to the entire board, the board voted to approve it. I believe it's consistent with the procurement policy and I don't see any violation of the procurement policy. The invoice presented is within the budget that was established, so from, on a, certainly subject of discussion by the board, but I don't see any legal issue with what's been done.
Okay. So do we have a?
Well, I would move we approve the Reed Smith invoice number twenty-nine eight two eight one one dated November thirtieth, twenty seventeen in the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars.
Do we have a second? I second it.
I'd like some discussion.
Yeah, I'd like some discussion also.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I thought it was very interesting, the, what's listed here. On the H.R. King for October twenty-sixth, it mentions emails from you, Walt. You know, I've asked several times to get copies of communication that you have had with Reed Smith and haven't been able to get them yet, so I would really like to get copies of the emails that you have sent to Reed Smith.
Sure, I see that.
So no problem with that?
No, no, no.
Great. I, I talked with Mr. King this morning and received the list of issues that are being pursued. I haven't actually had a chance to spend any time on that yet. I will, but I just got that this morning. So I assume that we will be hearing from them officially in the near future. Do you all plan on having that in January or is there a time set for that yet?
Well, ideally, we'd have the fifth board member.
But yeah, that's the next step that we, you and I have discussed at length, that, you know, the next thing would be to, since there's some concern about it, to get them to come and just speak to the whole board and make an assignment, a discussion to move forward. I guess, you know, one thing I would point out that, you know, you need to be, you know, careful about assigning ad hoc work products to them, just associated with the cost, so.
I originally brought this to the board because this process is completely, it is outside of our regular board-approved procurement policy. Usually we have the department head and the purchasing agent and depending on what level of spending, it's the general manager sign off. So I just did not feel comfortable signing off on this until everybody felt good with the work product. I know there's been concerns about, it's been a pretty closed process, which I have to say is kind of, it's troubled me because I think the other members seem to have not gotten, have gotten cut out of the process. So what I think that does is whenever we do get a final report, it puts question on the final report we get because it's been controlled very tightly. I'm surprised that staff hasn't been more involved. I know that you all have the vote and you make the decision. KRS gives you a lot of the ability to run the plant board, but we all do those through approved policies and approved procedures. I have accounting background and have performed audits, get audit performance every year and I just wanted to make a comment about that because I felt uncomfortable with the process, this and E three. And I think, I hope that the GM process is not as close as this because I think everybody needs to be a part of it.
As far as being outside of the process though, James just went through how we are following the, the procurement process.
That's not the policy. The policy I have and it's in the book has not been followed, but that's, it's okay. The board can, you can change things as you want to.
And I guess I would, you know, I would comment that, you know, we've been, as James pointed out, we're, you know, within the criteria of the original, the original action the board took. I've had yours and James assurance throughout the past year that we were in compliance. Your assurance is recent, it's June, so it's a little odd. One, I think that's a, it's a mischaracterization that it's a closed process and two, it's surprising to me that at this late date, with an agenda item that was, you know, sprung on us hours ago, that you now have questions about how the process is going.
Oh, I've always had questions, it's just now that we have to pay, I'm not.
But yet you've assured me on multiple occasions that.
Assured you what?
That the process was where it needed to be, that we'd done everything we needed to do and all through the past year with E three.
I've not been a part of the process.
And I also think with the E three, you know, that was demonstrated as a particularly open process, you know, we, we got to a draft, we brought, we sent out early release copies to KYMBA, we brought them in, had multiple days of discussion with them before there was a final product and everyone was very pleased on the E three side and our side and the KYMBA side when, when that resolved.
Well, the, the board approved for E three, for example, the board approved RFP for E three that was to, not to exceed forty-five thousand. It actually exceeded up to fifty-two thousand, actually more than that. The contract, our procurement policy says should be memorialized upon the project. Well, it was not memorialized, it was approved in March of two thousand seventeen and the contract was not signed until August, until we had the, the final. These are the things that kind of happen whenever you go outside of the process. So that's why I feel uncomfortable and I want to make sure that we do it right. But I don't know about, whenever it came time for the invoice, I was not ever going to sign off without bringing it to you because I have no idea of what's been done.
Yeah.
I can't approve a fourteen thousand dollar invoice without not knowing what work, what's who driving the work.
And not only that's in question, I think it's more, you know, just, well.
Yeah, well, I don't see how you can say that, I can't speak to the E three because I wasn't here, but how you can say that Reed Smith has been an open process is beyond me. I've asked for communication, you haven't sent anything, Ralph and I have no clue of what you have said to E Smith, to Reed Smith, and I think pretty standard operating process is that when you have sent emails to them, you should have also sent those emails to us and that hasn't happened.
I think that's just a mischaracterization and as we discussed in the last meeting, when you brought up questions, we sat down and we talked for two and a half hours.
We talked for two and a half hours, but we.
You spoke to Reed Smith themselves and, you know, if you needed to speak to him longer, you know, that's great. You clearly spoke to them again, so to characterize it as it's a black box, it's just not. You know, you've had a great deal of conversation about it with me and with Reed Smith.
And, and have received basically a lot of words but no information.
Well, hold on, I'd like to point out a couple of things. First, in the original motion, we had the three areas for Reed Smith to look into. You have a list of all the documents that Reed Smith has and essentially we said, here are the documents, here are the three goals, work on it. So what more direction is there to give them? Or to know about?
The actual communication. You know, when emails are sent out, we should have received a copy of that. If, if you were saying no more than here are the documents, we still should have received a copy of that.
Well, I have a question on that too, on open meeting rules. You can have two board members working on a project, but sharing it to more than two board members and discussing.
No, 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 no.
Is a question.
That is not, that is not the law for open meetings.
James, I have a question on that. How does that play out if two board members?
We're getting way far afield here. We're getting way far afield here.
Yeah, from approving an invoice.
And that's not criticism of anybody, but we're, let's come back if we can to this agenda item.
Okay, good, good point, this is a special meeting. So I guess, the indigent, what we're supposed to be deciding here is approving the Reed Smith invoice.
Right, and a discussion concerning that is certainly proper, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm the burr in the saddle. I'm the only member of the board that's been on here since the very beginnings in 2014 on discussions with our consultants on whether to, whether, and how to form a joint action agency with other city municipals' utilities. And we've been guided throughout by a range of very skilled people who brought us to this point today, with a well-established organization. And of course, as you know, we approved the E3 analysis, and that's still ongoing. It's considerably expensive, but it's been helpful, and it's still in process. Then in October last, we, by a split vote, this board approved another consultant, so we're layering consultants now. And this was this Reed Smith contract, again, by a split vote, up to $50,000. I'm looking over his invoice, and San Francisco rate's kind of high, is people charge $650 an hour, or $610 an hour, and there's one down here $350, that must be a file clerk or something, but it just seems to me that we're getting into an aura of science fiction on all this, layering consultants, and whether we really need to be doing this. So that's my two cents, and for that reason, I would not vote to approve any invoices on this Reed Smith.
Well, a couple of corrections, I don't want to get too far afield of the thing, but, you know, the motion to hire an attorney was unanimous, November of 2016. The motion to award the RFP to a particular vendor was a split vote, three to two. And then, yeah, I guess that's enough.
And, well, I'd like to mention something related to that, and James, you can tell me if this is too far off, but the contracts that we have with KYMBA extend for a number of years at a large dollar amount, and the consultants for KYMBA and the consultants for each of the municipals are the same consultants. We had no independent analysis of those contracts, and really that is the heart of the problem and where we are today. So I think this is important information that we're gathering to understand these contracts, both our next topic and with Reed Smith. And I feel money well spent.
Well, I guess the other broader point here is that it is an approved activity of the board, it's within the fiscal boundary set by the original motion, and, you know, surely we're not suggesting that we should not, you know, pay our bills.
I think I would like to see a little more output as far as what they're doing before we pay our bills. I mean, I agree, we have contracted with them, so we're going to have to pay the bill, but I think I would like to see a little more output before we pay this contract. Because as Mr. Denton said, we haven't, you know, there are a lot of things here mentioned for the $14,000, but we've seen nothing.
We talk a lot about transparency, but I felt like this has not been a transparent process, and I guess, I think that's what the heart of it is, is I would like to see any board-approved thing, you know, you've asked management to hire us to run the business. You've appointed myself as director and hands us the alternate to KYMBA, puts us in a very interesting spot whenever we're looking for the fiduciary duty we have to FBB, fiduciary duty we have to KYMBA, because we are a member. The board voted to be a member of KYMBA, we're in it. We live with the decisions of the past boards, and I think I really would encourage for a more open process, if any of these further projects take off, to be included in emails, to understand what's being communicated, because that report's going to come back, and nobody knows what it's going to say, and eventually there might be action, request to action be taken on the report, and I think it's, I think it's very important, we're dealing with large dollars, and talk about trying to keep rates low to your customers, well, you know, KYMBA is going to do that, and that's just all I'm asking for, is a more transparent process. But I definitely didn't want to sign off on this without approval from you all.
I think that's fine, and I disagree with the transparency comment, and, you know, I would defer to James, I mean, do you feel like there's anything improper about the way the Reed Smith process has been handled?
I already said that I did not find anything improper.
And I think it's, it's just, it's, I think we have to pay our bills, and we've made a motion, we approved it, we allocated funds for it, they've sent us a valid invoice, I think we have to pay that invoice.
It's being legal versus doing legalistic things versus what's the right thing to do. I think keeping people in a loop is the right thing to do.
Well, again, this was, you know, the motion back in November of 2016 was to have an independent review via the board and the board attorney.
Okay.
And that's exactly what we've been doing, and as James has indicated, that's completely proper.
I don't think your other members have been included, though.
They have, and they threw out the whole E3 process, I guess, you know, there's one email that I think that Don wants, I think says a whole lot, a whole lot to do about nothing. And I'm happy to share that initial pickoff email with you, if you'd like to have it.
I've said, I'd like to have it.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
So we have a motion and a second. We should vote, unless there's more discussion. Kathy, why don't you go ahead and call this member, please?
Member Ludwig?
No.
Member Hale?
No.
Member Baldwin?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Two, two votes.
So the motion fails, we are not paying Reed Smith. Okay, and let's go on to item number six, consider approving Energy Environment Economics E3 invoice number 118930004, dated October 31st, 2017, the amount of $4,896 for 2015 RFP analysis, and E3 report strategy responses to the Kentucky Municipal Energy Agency.
I move we approve the E3 invoice number 11893004, dated October 31st, 2017, in the amount of $4,896.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed.
Is that you now?
Yes.
No abstaining.
You abstained?
Yeah.
Okay, so, three in favor and one abstention. That concludes our meeting.
Very good.
Motion adjourned.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
All right, make a motion, I'm still moved.
Second, and Don seconded, thank you.
Take a vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.